From our combined teams from the fall, those are teams like the Barma State and Northeast together, from our boys from our city, Austin Barrett, all league and all county. From our girls domestic team, Ali Fleischman, all county, Katherine Gable, all county, Summer Matlack, all county, and Jusco, all county. Let's have a nice round of applause for all these students who were present this past season. If there are any coaches with us tonight in the audience or in the hallway, please join us for a picture. Please, the board of education, take a picture of all these high accomplishments here.
I'm gonna have you guys step down level and fill you step down level and work behind you guys. You guys come down. I'm gonna have you guys look at me first and then I'll move out of the way and help parents get photos. Should I get everyone in here? Alright, look right here first, everybody. It's Derek there, can you move out of the way?
Parents, please, take your pictures.
You can come up, you don't have to take it from back there.
Move around, take it wherever you want. Both from St. James that earned the title of league champion this past year. We'd like to honor them individually. The first team is the St. James Girls Country Team. They finished with a record of 5-0-1 in league competition. And here to recognize the team, our captains Olivia Russo, Ava Summartino, Gina Williams, and Kena Margos, along with head coach, Connor Gold. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge Coach Tina Moon, who's a St. James coach for the past 25 years. Please come up. team with a record of 9-1. Ms. Moon received the 2022-23 New York State Public High School Coach of the Year Award They were also league champions this past year. Here tonight, our captains Victoria Stelling, Alessa Chesky, and Amanda Madigan, along with head coach, Emily Small, who recognized the area league champions. for field hockey. Congratulations, Tina. This award is given in conjunction with the NPHS, the National Federation of State High School Associations. Ms. Moon is no stranger when it comes to receiving awards due to her hard work and her efforts. She's a member of the St. James Athletic Hall of Fame, the Suffolk Sports Hall of Fame, and has received Suffolk Coach of the Year honors seven times. She has coached six teams to county championships and six long alley champions. Two times, she was able to lead the team as state champion in 2001 and 2012 on the four trips of having taken her teams there. She's a University of Seneca graduate, and during her playing time, she was honored as a All-American, First Regional All-American, All-Big East, All-Big East Academic, All-American, and the UConn Club Award athlete. St. James is proud of Tina and all her accomplishments. We are thankful that in 1999, she accepted a job with St. James. Tina Moon truly stands a goal. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Sorry, 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 sorry. I'm cutting in front of everybody.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. I'm gonna continue at this time. I'm just gonna let some folks clear out. Good night, everybody. Thank you. Next order of business. In November of 2020, I received an email from our health department folks in regards to doing a potential youth risk behavior survey. It was based on a CBC survey, a national survey, that had been in circulation since 1991. As a matter of fact, almost 5 million students have responded to this survey. Some of us may have taken it ourselves when we were in school, or some of them might be a little bit older, like myself, took a variation of a survey such as that. The idea was to get some local data during the pandemic to make sure that we were helping our students, reaching out to our students who might be in need or involved in risky behaviors. When I first saw that survey, I emailed some of our cabinet immediately saying, "I understand the impetus behind this, but this will need board approval." That unfortunately did not happen. I saw a health survey that we've given over the past two years, 2021 fall, 2022 spring, 2022 fall, and again this past spring. When it did come to our attention that there were a great many questions on there that people had, we immediately pulled the survey. And I learned in the board that this was something that should have gone in front of them and did not. The survey is given throughout the United States, the national survey, for grade nine through 12 students. That survey, again, is given only in St. James in 10th grade. We only give it to 10th grade students. It fluctuates between 100 and 110 questions each year, based again on the national survey. Topics include bullying, unintentional injuries and violence, alcohol, drug use, tobacco, texting and driving, vaping, unhealthy dietary behaviors, inadequate physical activity, sexual behaviors, mental health, including suicide. The idea or purpose behind this survey is to find out where the at-risk behaviors are and to apply resources to there. To look at our curriculum, look back and see that. If a great many students are continuing to vape or smoking, for example, those types of things, then we would go back and try to look at our curriculum and make sure that we're touching base on those curriculum items, make sure, again, we're trying to help our students who are at risk. And that was the impetus behind the survey itself and what is created by the CDC. Our survey is probably 95% the same as the CDC's. However, we included in our survey some more, I would say, graphic questions that concerned a great many people. That's why there are people here tonight, and certainly concerned our community and our board members. We immediately, again, pulled access to the survey. Once we saw the survey and the questions that were within there, the survey is no longer available to our students. What we'll be doing going forward is anytime there might be a survey, and as you know, we do have a maturation program in 5th grade. Parents are notified about the program, what's gonna take place in the program, can be provided resources if they need them. Again, that's in 5th grade. I would recommend as we go forward, if we do any type of survey like this in the future, that again gets board approval, that parents see it, that there's parent consent, and parents be notified if we're going to utilize a survey just like that, such as that, in the future. Just check my notes, see if there's anything else I wanted to break forward. So, at this point, I think that's enough for my remarks. Mr. Scott, what I'm gonna do is we will have an open opportunity for people to speak to concerns around the survey or anything else in terms of public comment.
Yes, we have two public comment sections on our agenda. First public comment section is specifically related to items on the agenda. This is not an agenda item, but we will have an opportunity towards the end of the agenda to address any concerns that parents have.
Do you realize how it's formed? It wasn't put on the agenda?
What we're not gonna do, what we're not gonna do, okay?
What we're not gonna do is just allow you to...
No, no, what we're not gonna do is we're not gonna call out, we're not gonna yell, we're gonna have a civil meeting.
Why you put it on the agenda?
Because our last meeting, okay, was prior to the survey even happening. So this is the first meeting since the survey. So, once again, it is very important to us too, okay? But understand one thing, and I will order a map for this, what we did not know about the survey, the minute we found out about the survey, we pulled it immediately, okay?
I understand, sir, but we did the right things to do, we watched our parents, we looked at our grandparents. We don't wanna argue, we want to be...
No, I understand that.
But one thing, you let us speak first and then have your meeting, because whatever it is, whatever your meeting is about, we respect it. But can you let us speak? That's why we came, we came out of goodwill, out of respect for all...
Out of respect for the community, okay?
But you won't let us speak until we have...
Can I finish what I had to say? Out of respect for the community, okay, I'll ask the board for approval to move the second comment section to the front of the meeting, okay, which is what you requested, so you have an opportunity to speak, okay, and share your concerns. Okay? And so, we'll call up... When we do that, give me one second, just wanna get a report from our student board members, ask what everything is going on, and any information I want to share what's going on in your high school.
Not much changed since last meeting, just shaping up the rest of March Madness and the basketball tournament we're gonna run later this month, sign up for you Friday, so it's padded for us.
Thank you. Lisa?
We've also been planning for March Madness, and then also, we've been... Our varsity, our team, the nationals.
Second place, which is outstanding, so we were to first and second. Thank you. Approval of minutes, it's the motion for approval of minutes of our last board meeting in February 8th. I recall the second was solid, flattering. Questions, concerns, and or favorites? Aye, opposed, motions, present. Brings us to public comment. Okay, we have three minutes to speak and share your concerns. If we put in some questions, we will. Understand, this is still a matter we're looking into very closely and discussing. So, I apologize if I... Miss Mantraine?
I appreciate everybody's position and everything you're all about to say, and this is my own personal opinion, and some of you are gonna hate me for it. But if people actually stayed till the end of each meeting and started attending more meetings, we wouldn't have issues like we have right now.
Okay, so once again...
There's no back and forth.
Listen, I... Let me, once again, move it so you guys can be heard early on, so you're not here until 10:00 tonight. So, please, Lisa Aron, Lisa Aron?
Yes.
Come on up. Right up to the podium.
Thank you so much.
No, no problem. If you push the button on the microphone, it's...
I have no children in the school district any longer. I'm a member of this community and I pay taxes for 29 years. I'd like to start off with a scripture, Luke 10:19. Behold, I give unto you power to turn on serpents and scorpions, and over all the power of the enemy; and nothing shall by any means hurt you. And I say this on behalf of every child in St. James, because they are our children. I come before you regarding the sex survey, as you know, 10th graders, only 15-year-olds. Is this a requirement for graduation? If yes, what purpose does it serve for the health department to discuss this with our children of the community? Is this... Where does this data go and to who does it go to? Without parental consent, I understand you, none of you knew about it beforehand, but once you did? Is this the introduction to FCL or CRT to the children of the district? Was there ever anyone in the Freedom of Information Act given to find out if there's funding towards any of this? As was for the COVID, where that's why the mandates and the lockdowns, that there's funding for it, that's why we extended masks and etc. See, some of these children are behind in reading, writing, and arithmetic. Why are we not focusing on that? Or something that's a positive to love, honor, and respect your elders, or your parents, or your grandparents, or anyone? Wouldn't that be more productive instead of this perversion of the sexual survey? I'm 54 years old. I didn't know what anal sex was until I was 42 years old. Did your children and grandchildren get a copy of this survey first? No, because you didn't know about it, correct? Well, if they did, would you feel comfortable giving your children or grandchildren a copy of that survey? I don't think so. Anonymous? What about religious beliefs? Some of us don't... It's not your place to discuss this with our children. Focus on something that's strengthening, that much better skills for the future. Certainly, I don't see the purpose of it. Why promote the perversion? Why not consider distributing a survey of respect? Something positive. You're opening the door to pure evil. Nothing good will come from this introduction to perversion. That you intentionally pushed, that's not overstepping. You should have known as the board, they've been here a long time, a long time. They're our children. I don't know if you know what's going on in the United States. Some of us do know what's going on. My sister's grandchildren go to Loudoun County, Virginia. Anyone here aware of it? The 14-year-old? The one gentleman, the one young boy that went into the transgender bathroom acting as a transgender in a skirt? And wait, my niece's friend, what did the school do? As Eastern North. They put him in the other high school, so what did he do? He did it again. What did the board do? Garland, you know what he did? He had that whole thing with the feds, they locked up the father of the first girl that was locked up. Could you imagine? I put myself on both sides, but I have to tell you...
That was your three minutes. Thank you very much.
Okay, I just want one more thing I just want to say. God bless you, okay? And you don't answer to us, I have no fear, but you have to answer to God one day.
Ms. Aron's your comment. Your comments appreciated, and thank you, and we would certainly...
Thank you so much for hearing me out. I appreciate it.
Barbara Needham?
Thank you, everyone. It's really sad, and I'm so sorry to hear about what we just said. I graduated from St. James, big St. James family, and I know this job is not easy, and I'm not here to condemn anyone, it's not my job, but I am very, very worried about the direction of where this world is going and what is happening with our children. It just makes me really sad. I was prepared, but I...
Take a minute.
My daughter is so proud of every day to go to school, and she's in 7th grade now at Seneca. I talked to the principal, and she had said, "This was not allowed in the school, but going forward, I don't want this to happen to our kids. We need to do better, every single one of us, guys, right? We're all just starting to awaken now, but we have to do better." I'm not blaming anyone. Sometimes things do happen in our lives, but at the same time, we have to be responsible as adults to protect our children. That's number one. Secondly, I just want everyone to be accountable for their actions. If they do something wrong, they need to be accountable for it, and we all need to just be honest and transparent with one another. You know, recently just signed in a bill on the House, was an HR 5, which was a bill of rights for parents, so that we have our rights back as parents. We need to know what's in the curriculum, we need to know, so that we can make a decision based on what we think is fair for our children. I'm sure you can all agree, and I know, I appreciate you taking that out when it was found out, but I do have family that works at St. James, and for what I understand, immediately, he was not reprimanded, and that's a bit scary to me, knowing that at Seneca, with the penis game, that person was taken out immediately. So, I just want you guys to be, as you go through the investigation, please, just bring that knowledge to us so that we can be informed about what is going on, what's going to happen, and I just want to make sure that we, going forward, this is not allowed anymore. That's all we're asking, really, at the end of the day. We just don't want our children to be thrown into the mix of all of this stuff that's going on in the world. They should just be focused on school and having fun, making the best of their education, and all of us, I know, can feel the same way. We just want the best for our children, and we want them to be well-rounded. We're not... Listen, whatever the kids decide to do with their lives going forward is fine, but we just need to dim it down a bit and just keep focused on what we're learning. I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Does that happen if it didn't come up before and it told me two times wasn't about it?
Didn't come up with that name. You can fill out a card.
Do you want me... Sorry, Roseanne Jordan? Roseanne Jordan? I'm sorry.
My name is Roseanne Jordan, and I live in the St. James School District. Recently, 10 graders, and I know you're all here because you know, 15 and 16-year-olds, those are 10 graders, were deliberately exposed to offensive sexually explicit material on their school computers in the form of a survey. The school computers weren't hacked by some outside unknown sexual predator, the reality was far worse. The disturbing material was delivered from inside the school itself. It's kind of like an insidious force multiplier to inflict double the damage, because their sense of trust in a safe place, their school, was also violated. Let's not kid ourselves, we are in a political and ideological war across our country. It's been growing worse for some time now. Schools are being pushed, pulled, and dragged into a war zone, and children are on the front lines. And why are they on the front lines? Because young people are key targets. They are the most vulnerable, malleable, most defenseless, and easily exportable. So it is up to the parents, teachers, concerned adults, to declare a no-war zone in our public schools. Young students deserve an opportunity for excellence in academics, not destructive, dead-end radicalization and indoctrination into political power struggles. I brought two handouts, the parental rights demand letter template for parents to legally object out of any further offensive material being given by their children, you know, to their children by their school, as well as some helpful parental rights and educational websites. You can see me at the... If you would like copies. Thank you so much.
Ms. Shonan, if you could, if you have copies, if you really... I think you heard, would want to see that.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much. I apologize if I... Lorenzo Chiricchio?
Thank you. My name is Lorenzo Chiricchio, and I'm a daughter of St. James. I've emailed the board. Much to my dismay, only two members have responded to my email, displaying what disgust about the survey that came about. I don't know exactly what was said on the survey, I haven't been given a copy. I've spoken to a board member and a superintendent to ask for that survey, however, I wasn't given one. I don't know who approves that to get it to me, because I want to see it. I want to see what questions my daughter was exposed to. Thank you. I've also spoken to... I'm speaking to legal counsel. I am also spoken to the police. This is a child endangerment. This is no different than somebody in a van going up to a child and asking him if they liked anal sex. And the position of authority, the position of authority, this teacher, and I'd like to know the name of that teacher that sent this out, had it, edited it, created it, and sent it under the guise of education. I'm sure my daughter doesn't appreciate it. I have not spoken with her, because I don't know exactly what it entails. So when I do get a copy of it, I will ask her for opinion of it, and I will definitely seek legal counsel regarding that. You know, let's be honest, the kids are being offended by, I hate to bring it up, but woke policy, and they are being indoctrinated, and where else could we protect? Where else could we protect our kids? I like to think that I can protect my daughter, but I can't be on top of her when she does a schoolwork. Exactly like... Let's not kid ourselves, we are in a political and ideological war across our country. It's been growing worse for some time now. Schools are being pushed, pulled, and dragged into a war zone, and children are on the front lines. And why are they on the front lines? Because young people are key targets. They are the most vulnerable, malleable, most defenseless, and easily exportable. So it is up to the parents, teachers, concerned adults, to declare a no-war zone in our public schools. Young students deserve an opportunity for excellence in academics, not destructive dead-end radicalization and indoctrination into political power struggles. I brought two handouts, the parental rights demand letter template for parents to legally opt out of any further offensive material being given by their children, you know, to their children by their school, as well as some helpful parental rights and educational websites. You can see me if you would like copies. Thank you so much.
Ms. Turner, if you have copies, if you really, I think you heard, would want to see that.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much. I apologize if I... Can I bring your name? Lorenzo Chiricchio?
Thank you. My name is Lorenzo Chiricchio, I have a daughter in Saichem. I've emailed the board. Much to my dismay, only two members have responded to my email, displaying my disgust about the survey that came about. I don't know exactly what was said on the survey, I haven't been given a copy. I've spoken to a board member and a superintendent to ask for that survey, however, I wasn't given one. I don't know who approves that to get it to me, because I want to see it. I want to see what questions my daughter was exposed to. Thank you. I've also spoken to... I'm speaking to legal counsel. I am also spoken to the police. This is a child endangerment. This is no different than somebody in a van going up to a child and asking him if they like anal sex. And under the position of authority, the position of authority, this teacher, and I'd like to know the name of that teacher that sent this out, had it, edited it, created it, and sent it under the guise of education. I'm sure my daughter doesn't appreciate it, I have not spoken with her because I don't know exactly what it entails. So when I do get a copy of it, I will ask her for opinion of it, and I will definitely seek legal counsel regarding that. You know, let's be honest, the kids are being offended by, I hate to bring it up, but woke policy, and they are being indoctrinated. And where else could we protect? Where else could we protect our kids? I like to think that I can protect my daughter, but I can't be on top of her when she does a schoolwork. Exactly like, and the school, there was a failing in the survey that you guys missed, three or four years' worth. Whose fault is that? Who missed it? Who missed this survey? Why wasn't it submitted? If the person knows that it has to be passed by the school board, why didn't he do it? There's a lot of questions that we need answers, and everybody's looking at me, but I'm seeing answers. And I am afraid that us as the parents, we're not going to get answers. You guys are reviewing it, and there's got to be a tongue-cleaning. It's been three weeks. Give or take. So we'd like to have some resolution. You got a name? I want to see the survey, and I want to see what we're going to do from there. I'm sorry, but you know what? We've evolved into a nation without consequence. Because people do things, we have thieves stealing from stores, no consequences. We have people accosting, educators accosting our children, no consequence. And there's a lot of that going around, and unfortunately, without, we have laws, no consequence, there's no laws at all. And I simply think that these persons shouldn't be getting away with this, and I have to hold the school board in account that, you know, hey, anything new you're going to be sending out this year, let us know. Maybe it comes to reminders, too.
What I will say to you, sir, is that there's going to be a lot of change in result.
I'd like to see that.
No, there's going to be a lot of changes to how surveys are done, parental consent. Dr. Pelletary has already put together a plan that he's going to present to the board so that our children, okay, are not exposed to such descriptive questions. And just so you're aware, as you may, not to put anyone in the spotlight, we are parents of 10 graders, but we're exposed to it. So our feelings and your feelings are not far off. I just want you to understand that there's going to be change in this, I promise you. But I will tell you is that any type of disreaction of a staff member is confidential, that will not be shared publicly.
Listen, we pay his salary. We pay his salary.
Once again, under state education laws, confidentiality personnel cannot be shared publicly. But if there is any type of resolution, that would be something that would be voted on. But the thing is that, I promise you, again, as board principal, it will be changed.
I don't expect this person to be employed with Saichem anymore. Thank you.
Deborah Lada? I apologize, Debbie Safer?
Good evening, thank you. I do have one question, is it like a question-answer? I just need to know, ma'am, what is your name, please?
Meredith Gold.
Meredith Gold?
Meredith Volby.
V-O-L-B-Y?
Ms. Lada, if you could just address your question.
Sorry, I just wanted to do that. Okay, well, I just first want to address the fact that we do vote the board in, and that you do have to answer to the parents at some point. I know confidentiality and the state laws and all that good stuff that protect the teachers. You admitted already for not being aware of the survey, so my question is, is it the curriculum? Was it in the curriculum that this survey? And how many children have you saved from the dangers of vaping and sex and all this? Because you're saying that you're gathering the data to help the children. So then the children go on to what? See a social worker? Like, what happens when you have all the information from the survey? Also, parents, I'm addressing you, you can go on Saichem website, click on the district clerk, and you have Freedom of Information Act. You can get on there, and you can ask for emails. You can have his name on the superintendent, everything with the curriculum, everything. Go on the Saichem website, click on the district clerk, and do your homework. Your children are worth it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hi, everyone. I've emailed the board, and I'd like to thank Dr. Pelletary for the conversation that we had regarding the survey. So you all know how I feel about the inappropriateness of the questions that were asked. I was told that the original survey questions received approval a few years ago, and at some point, the questions were changed. So I would just like to know why the health department didn't ask for reapproval on the new material. I wondered what type of person doesn't see a problem with asking minors questions about anal and oral sex, and the word pedophile immediately comes to mind. I would not ask you all about your personal sexual experiences because that would be creepy, but you know, it's even creepier, an adult asking a minor these questions. I know that I also speak for many when I ask, where's the accountability for this? This use of bad judgment should never happened, and there needs to be repercussions. This can't happen again. There can no longer be free rein of staff asking students whatever they please on sensitive subjects without parental consent. We've seen what happened this week in Compsog, when a teacher believes that they have the right to push their own ideologies onto innocent young children. A lot of the outrage not only stems from the questions, but from the fact that parents were not notified beforehand of this personal intrusive nature. And it's been really hard for many of us to have trust in the public school system the last couple of years, especially with all the truth that is coming out regarding covert agendas. Case in point, this morning's admission from East Meadows Assistant Superintendent, that schools on Long Island are secretly indoctrinating students with racial and gender politics. So as you can see, what you guys are doing in this district as a whole is only making that case stronger. On multiple occasions, myself and other parents have brought up the importance of communication and transparency. So what I think needs to happen is a policy needs to be put in place, board of education policy in writing, which includes the proper channels to go through, required approvals, notification, and consent from parents for surveys and guest speakers. So I'm just going to end by asking the board to have a meaningful discussion and take action to ensure you really have the best interest of all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I've been in the school district for about three years. My son is now in 10th grade. He is autistic with ADHD. I had to email my son's teacher to make sure that this survey was not handed to him. My son lives in his own world. He still watches cartoons made for 12-year-olds and 8-year-olds. Pokemon is the thing that he talks about most. My son's teacher told me that the students complained last year to the health teachers about this survey, that it was intrusive, that students didn't want to go home and tell their parents about this survey because they were embarrassed. And I asked the health teacher why it was brought back, and his answer was, "I don't know." That is frustrating, that is upsetting. And the only way us parents found out about this survey is because one child, one student, was brave enough to take pictures of certain questions and texted to their parents, and their parent put it on the Facebook group for Saichem parents. Now, I grew up in Patrick Metford. Not once was that survey ever handed to me in all 9th through 12th. It's intrusive. The fact that I need to check my son's schoolwork to find out what is being taught to him is frustrating, is upsetting. I should be able to trust my son is in good hands when he goes to school. There is enough to worry about. We've had emails, text messages about scares being done. I had to race up one day to take my kid out of school because I was afraid that he wasn't going to come home because of threats. I should not have to worry about his schoolwork and what's being taught. And even though it says that survey was anonymous, it was done on Google Docs. They have to log in with their login information, and they have to put in their password. How is that anonymous? This, any of those questions should be between a student and their parent and a student and their doctor. That's it. My daughter did not have to go through this. Not once was she ever asked those questions. This, the health teachers, that they decided, after students complained last year and it was brought back, they need to be held accountable. Us parents, and as you say, you're all parents too, you should be able to trust that your students, your kids are being taught what they're supposed to be taught, not what teachers want to teach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for all you do, for your time, and thank you for letting me speak. With regards to the health survey, I'm going to speak very briefly on that point. I felt it was totally uncalled for, it was totally unnecessary. I also felt it was very vile, and included extremely private information that no student who is seeking an education should have to disclose. These types of questions should be between a parent and a child, and perhaps maybe a pediatrician. And I can tell you, my son is 17, I go into every appointment with him. Because I don't trust the medical field, and I definitely don't trust them more now in the last three years. And he's never been asked those questions, never. I really think that the schools should continue with their 5th grade, you know, boys go in this room, girls go in that room, young ladies learn about their menstrual cycles, the boys learn about what they learn about, and that should be it. As far as when they get to middle school and high school, let's stick with the basics. I graduated Saichem North in 89, my husband graduated in 90. Saichem is, I don't even recognize it. I think we should just stick with, don't smoke, don't vape, don't drink and drive. Let's talk about sex in middle school and high school, age appropriately, and let's stress abstinence for as long as you could possibly. Let's stress, if you're going to give in, let's stress using condoms and birth control, safe sex, and that should be it. My son did take this survey last year, he was a 10th grader. And I was riveted last year about it, and my son knows better. How their district or state needs to know this information about our children, know this wasn't anonymous, like the other mom said. The survey was done on their Chromebook, which I absolutely despise that we are using now. Let's go back to Roosley paper and three ring binders, because it is impossible. We all have more than one children, we work. It's like a full-time job to go through my son's Chromebook to double and triple-check what you people are teaching him. I don't need to do that at 10 o'clock every night, it's exhausting. With having past human resources experience, I can tell you that this would be illegal to ask of any employees, bosses, or CEOs. Let me ask you guys up there, board superintendent, would you like these types of questions asked of you as a condition of your employment? I don't want these questions asked to my son as a condition to get him education. Would you think it was your employer's business to know this about you? It's disgraceful, and the lack of transparency, as well as higher-ups not being aware of this being given to our students is appalling and criminal to me. I've instructed my kids to never fill out another thing. Not to give up any personal information, and he was told by my husband and I, he's only to put his name, date, and teacher's name on any paperwork or Chromebook going forward. If the teacher doesn't like it, they can call or email me. As it is, we now have these final forms for all sports students, which, by the way, parents, if you don't realize, this is a third-party entity. So now my son's detailed medical history can be out there even more for more eyes to see, possible more hackers to get into. None of the parents were asked if we even wanted these final forms with a third-party entity.
Thank you, ma'am, I'm sorry, that is your free to have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Lane Shindel?
Have you ever had oral sex? What about vaginal? What about anal sex? I feel impossible saying this to a group of adults. I cannot imagine how I would have felt as a 14-year-old girl having a male, grown-up health teacher ask me that. And I don't care if it's anonymous, because computers get hacked, Target got hacked. All these big corporations that have firewalls and things get hacked all the time, Southern County. Little Google Classroom, Saichem, I love Saichem, a Saichem graduate. Do we really think our Google Classroom cannot get hacked? Do we really think that this information about minor sexual information cannot be leaked to pedophiles? I really irate over this, people that know me. I only get upset when something really impacts my children. And the more I thought about this, the more I thought about this, I kept saying, I don't want to see a teacher or an educator get in trouble for this. I love my teacher friends, I'm not an educator, but I respect you all so much. But there is no way in my mind that I could see how an adult, who is a leader, who works with children, could ask a minor if they had vaginal, anal, or oral sex? The only person in my life that have ever asked me that is an intimate partner in the setting of a bedroom, okay? And I'm not ashamed to say that. But if an adult asked me that when I was a child, who just... Not that the child is having sex, I know people say that, but there's still a lot of virgins out there. And I have a very, very hard time that this was a question. I'm a leader at a Fortune 500 company, I have a staff of people that report to me. If I asked any of my colleagues if they had vaginal, oral, or anal sex, I would be fired on the spot. It is against our company policy for any personal information. And let's not forget, we also, that survey also had other information about transgender, about what people, whether, basically we're saying, are you gay or straight? And you know what? I have a lot of friends and colleagues and people that are transgender, gay, and straight, and it's none of anyone's business. Once again, unless you're in a bedroom with an intimate partner, okay? And I spoke to CDC, I know a lot about the CDC, okay? I'm in the medical field, I'm in the science field. I went on their website, the CDC survey did not have oral, anal, or vaginal sex on it. I want to add, I love all of you on the board of ed. I personally know a few of you, I know you volunteer, I know your parents as well. I know you're probably as irate as I am, so I do not direct this at you, I really don't, okay? And I really don't want to see any teacher get fired over this. No one should be losing their jobs now, but we as parents, we owe our children better. One other question, that data is still out there, even if it's erased. Our 10th graders volunteered, or some of them were told if they didn't do this, they would get a zero. Okay, there are laws protecting data. You can't just take a survey from minors about sexual health and not say where that data is gone. Is it really destroyed? What are they using it for? Are they using it for financial gain to get kickbacks from governments and stuff? We need to know, we need to know where this information is going and what is happening with it.
Ma'am, that was just for the...
Okay, thank you.
Greg Arad? Can you hear Ms. Arad?
Hello, how are you? My name is Brianna Richardson, and I'm the chapter chair of Moms for Liberty for Southern County. And I would like to say that I'm absolutely appalled at what's going on here in this district, as well as other districts across Long Island. In the past three years, there have been a gradual transition to iPads, laptops during school. And, you know, the textbooks are gone. We have no more textbooks. And the increased focus on digital learning comes with a high price to our children's safety. Not only has our children's scholastic activities become more difficult to track and monitor to disappearing digital assignments, we are also confronted with the challenge of knowing what websites they are now directed to as part of school assignments. Furthermore, in the latest digital danger, are unmonitored surveys, according, just like the one we just had here. According to the political article in 2014, two separate families, okay, sued their school district because their minor children were surveyed and the digital footprint was tracked, just like it can be here.
I'm going to stop you for a second, I got to answer this question.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Aragon, I know I spoke on the phone, you, where's he at? You have a parent, you're a parent of a child in St. John's, right?
Yeah, he's a parent.
I know that, you know, once, once in, to give it as interest as child, is, is student issue.
Correct.
Are you, are you a, a St. John's resident?
No, no, I'm speaking for.
So, so we have a policy, okay, that, that, well, right now, it's a current policy, so, I'm going to.
Okay, so would you guys rather more litigation, or would you rather somebody be? Because this teacher needs a thirty, twenty A, and you could easily do that by getting him just taken out of his district.
I, I appreciate you speaking, but I would give it to Mr. Aragon, if you'd come up, please. I bet she's not ready, so. Miss Aragon, I'm giving you the courtesy, as a parent, okay, of a student. Now, it, it doesn't, our policy doesn't allow it.
I spoke to Paul Terry on the phone, and what I was told by him was that this might have, the survey might have slipped through the cracks during the pandemic. Okay, so my question is, you got paid during the pandemic, correct?
Could, is you, would you be comfortable coming up to my seat?
Moms for Liberty, thank you.
You people are so ridiculous, because you know you're in the wrong.
Listen, once again, we're not, we're not going to be, as I said to you, okay, listen, if you're going to use that language, you may actually leave, okay? We're going to have a calm civil meeting of civil adults, okay? As I said to you, this board is, is upset about the same survey, you guys are upset, and we're going to take care of it, okay? And we're going to make sure the policy is placed so that our kids are protected, okay? Once again, that is not something, as I mentioned earlier, it's protected confidentiality, it's not something that we're going to discuss out here, okay? But you have our word that we're going to address this issue and we're going to make sure that this wrong is never going to happen again. So, I'm going to turn it off, Mr. Aragon, Mr. Aragon, I'm giving you three minutes, please, to speak as courtesy as, as a parent of a child.
So I'd like to know, who has the survey results now?
That, that's a question I don't have the answer to. I, I understand the question, the, the survey was anonymous?
It wasn't anonymous, so the survey was done on Chromebooks that we all know, correct?
But in order to, on Chromebooks, you have to, you have to request an email, okay?
You have to be logged into it, so now, the day after this whole thing happened, was asking kids up there interested in seeing the results of the survey?
I'm not aware of that information. Once again. Once, we're not, I'm not aware of that information, so. Was, was it me that was aware of it? I wasn't aware of this.
Nope, it was me.
So what are we doing about that now?
Once again, if you, Mr. Aragon, if you could speak in terms of comment, this is not supposed to be a back-and-forth, open discussion. It's to hear comments and be able to provide you with feedback, that's what it comes down to.
But you guys don't give any answers, that's the problem.
I had an hour-long conversation with you on the phone.
Correct.
And, and we did have a positive conversation, then provided you with information that my own personal feelings and how I felt, and, and what the district is going to be doing going forward to make sure this is.
But my question is, it's been over two weeks now, correct? Nobody knows where this data is?
I'm, I'm sorry.
It's been over two weeks, does anybody know where the data is?
Well, once again, that's information that, the question that's been from up the board, is going to request that, that information. Guys, the, from our personnel, from our, you know, our staff. Once again, I, I, I'm going to open it to you, Mr. Aragon, if you want to utilize the three minutes to, to address it, you can.
I'd like to get answers, like a question.
This is not about, what we still need to get answers, that's the habit of us.
It's six-thirty tonight, we just got briefed.
We, we just, yeah, we just got briefed, we're still getting information for ourselves, so, like, so there's answers to your questions, I can't answer.
When can we expect answers?
Soon as we get all of the details.
Do we have a timeframe? I mean, like, I work in a business also, I can't go to, you know, a CEO of a company and tell them, I'll get back to you when I feel like it. So do we have a timeframe when this is going to be rectified, or are we going to have some sort of answers?
So I don't have a specific timeframe for you, but something that's going to be addressed immediately. Weeks, months, less than months, shortly, okay? It's all the chairkeepers, we're still learning, we, we had an executive session meeting just to find out details of what happened as investigations are going on. So we will just brief, an hour ago, okay, an hour ago. So, so I will tell you that the issue will be rectified, you're not, I, I, I asked you once already, not to yell out immediately, so please, pray for me on that, okay? As soon as we get information, I promise you that there will be change to the process, so that, once again, our schemes will not be exposed to these types of correct questions.
Okay, and are we investigating the same teacher that has been asking the students now if they want to, you know, not know the survey results?
We're going to look into the whole thing, I appreciate you sharing it with us, but we're going to look into the whole thing.
Would you like me to play it?
No, I don't want you to play it, I don't want you to play it, because, once again, personnel is confidential matter. If you want to share it with the superintendent, we can one have it together, whatever it is.
Sure. Oh, Gladys, can we listen to it after this is end?
Your desk is private. Yeah, I would say to Mr. Aragon, if you could send it, I appreciate it, I, I'd like to hear it himself, okay?
And then, she's, according to the New York State Penal Law Section twenty-six dot ten, the survey is in danger in the welfare of a child, is anybody aware of that?
Yep.
Once again, I mean, that's, that's information we need to come out legal counsel.
What does legal counsel say?
Once again, we, we will just brief at six-thirty, we will just brief.
So, so we've been going on for almost three weeks, and you guys just spoke about this thirty minutes before this meeting, that's what I'm telling you.
I just, I want to speak to that, the way your board works is we have meetings scheduled, we are not allowed to conduct business between meetings. So this is the first time since this incident's occurred that we are meeting as a board. So we're being, we're being briefed, we're being, listening to your information clearly, we hear you, and then we are going to handle this going forward. This is the first time that we are sitting down as a board that are here, getting these details and this information. And again, we're saying it time and time again, we are just as angry as you are, we are working on this today, we met before, we're here to listen to you tonight, and we're going to do what we have to do going forward. But we, between February eighth and today, we had no board meetings scheduled. So we have now, this is the first time we are conducting business.
So, and you guys said you all don't, haven't known about this, right? Like, the survey was new for everybody on the board?
Until the pictures were posted, okay, on social media, we had no idea the survey was taken.
So what about all those complaints in previous years, that it was blown to everybody's attention?
Nothing came to the Board of Education.
Nothing came to the Board of Education.
And just so, just so everyone's clear, I've been here, this is my fourth year, you can boil every one of my emails, we have never gotten complaints about this until this year.
So then who's responsible for that? Where does, like, who's dropping the ball then?
That's what we're finding.
That's what we're finding. Let us do the, let's, let us find out, all of the details. I mean, I heard a parent say that they knew about it last, last year.
Yeah, and that's a complaint.
To who?
To who? To the Board of Education? If, had we received a complaint from a parent last year, this would have been addressed last year. Had we received it two years ago, what are you doing just to?
So you also started off saying that that whole survey is done by the CDC, that CDC survey is done on paper, with pencil, one or two pencils, it's hand drawn. So the fact that you guys are putting that out for years, whether or not you're using the same questions that the CDC is using or not, is irrelevant, because you're doing it digitally.
And that's something that, that, you know, once again, we, we.
I mean, I was more happy if you guys would go over everything in detail.
The minute the board found out about the survey, it was, it was suspended. No, no, we, we, we stopped, please.
No, we're getting frustrated.
All right, so we're going to end it, all right?
I was worried about our property, our taxes and everything.
Mr. Aragon?
You're totally missing it, okay, because I didn't bring that, I didn't bring that.
We're not going to go, we're not going to go back, we're not going to go back. Please, Mr. Aragon? Please address, please address. Listen, we're not.
We've gone back and forth on this, you're misunderstanding what I'm saying, I'm saying we should be taking care of it together as a community, and not running to the media about every little thing, because that makes us all a moron. You're right, in this case, you're the only one.
Uh, to me, fair, please forward us this, your, your, your. No, please forward me your terms, and we'll address it, and you know that, anytime you need to reach out to me, I will certainly have a conversation. Thank you.
Can I speak for a minute?
No, 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 we're not, this conversation, no, no, Miss, hold me.
So I'll write out my, take my three minutes then, give me a yellow card, please.
We, we had a conversation, okay, I understand you're trying, you will have.
Because I'm also a taxpayer.
But you're serving as a school member right now.
Okay, but I'm also a parent at the end of the day, so I either get my three minutes on the yellow card, or I get my three minutes on the white card.
And you're also receiving information from the community and not sharing it with the rest of us, and we're all pissed, and now we hear that you have more information than we do.
I received a video phone conversation that I didn't understand. You want to know why I don't share it? Because I'm a lone island, I'm the only person.
Listen, I want to make a motion, this conversation is, is ended, okay, and tabled indefinitely, right?
I didn't share it because it wasn't factual.
Once again. Once again, we're not going back and forth, we heard the community, we heard the community, your, your concerns are well-taken, well-noted, and we are going to address the concerns and make sure that this never happens again, I promise you, all right? Thank you for coming out and addressing your concerns. If anybody wants to wait at the end of the meeting, if you want to address a board member, talk to a board member, we, we, we may as well develop to address any individual concerns you have, all right? Okay. Business items, all right? Oh, we have a budget presentation, all right? Um, Ms. Sacks, Michelle?
Right before you finish, I'm going to remove myself from the rest of the meeting.
Foil that. If I can't be here for my three minutes, there's no sense in me sitting here.
Mary, no, but you, you know, it's not a matter of being hurt for three minutes, it's a matter of being confrontational and creating a bigger problem than we have. The board is aware of the situation, we're going to address it, we're, we're going to address it.
Right, but the people are right, we didn't call an emergency meeting like we do for every other meeting.
Once again.
We didn't address three minutes, yes, we, thirty minutes before, why? Because I said a week ago, hey, we need to have some kind of brief on this, why, what is going on? And there's so much that we sit here, I don't share a lot with you guys, because you guys all think that I'm some political moron that has this agenda that nobody else shares my, my view. You guys all sit here and you crucify me, you make me feel horrible, you, did you not think, we can have back and forth, yeah, I get it.
I'm going to excuse Alyssa Mathi. I'm going to excuse that.
There is something very trivial and sinister going on in the public.
Shelley, ready to go with questions today?
Okay, thank you, this is budget workshop number three, and we will be covering curriculum and instruction on this evening's presentation. So our budget discussion topics for this evening will be, uh, the curriculum and instruction, second codes, which are listed up here. I'm not going to read through all of them, they'll be covered during the presentation. And then, at the end, we will do a recap of everything that Mr. Sacks is going to cover on the curriculum and instruction. And then we'll address the non-instructional areas from the first and second workshop, and then the student activity, the support services. So to start, we have Mr. Sacks.
Good evening, everybody. This evening, we're going to start with the Assistant and Deputy Superintendent, Supervision, and our WSHR radio station. Let's begin with account twenty-eleven, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum. The twenty-two, twenty-three budget is eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, um, twenty-three, twenty-four proposed is one million and twenty-four thousand. That is a one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar increase, which equates to a twen, almost a twenty-one percent increase over the current year. And I just want to point out what is driving that increase.
Wayne, can we just ask everybody who gets to the clocking to just maybe answer if they want to? We're just waiting to continue, if you wouldn't mind just waiting till the end?
I just have one little question, I'm meeting just on this one night, that's all, I don't want to fire anybody, that's all. That's all. But thank you so much for your time, have a great night, God bless you.
Let's continue. So, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, account twenty-eleven, is a almost twenty-one percent increase over the current budget. What's driving that is within that account code twenty-eleven, there are plenty of services. Particularly, we're using BOSI's for our printing of curriculum services. So we're just bringing the budget up to what's actually happening at this point.
Ryan, I asked Michelle to actually go back and look at this number, because again, printing is expensive, and that is why we utilize technology these days, and more than we used to have. So I want us to make sure that this is printing that we really need to do, okay?
Correct, and that, I'll have that discussion with every department, because that's where.
Understood, thank you.
Most of it is our elementary math work, which we're actually looking to purchase now from a vendor who has more child-friendly versions. So we anticipate maybe changing that.
So. But, but Ms. Heinz, you're talking about future use, not for next year, for next year, you're still anticipating printing? Oh, for next year?
Yeah, so we're trying to stay under that budget.
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay, our next section, account twenty-thirteen, Deputy Superintendent. Current budget is three hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Proposed twenty-three, twenty-four is going to three hundred and ninety-six thousand, that's a thirty-six thousand, almost a thirty-seven thousand dollar increase, or ten point two-two percent. What's driving that percentage increase is because the Deputy Superintendent last year was accounted for under the, under the business office. It has now been moved to the administration section.
So again, Ryan, it's not new, it's, it's an existing number that we moved to a new line.
This is not a new expenditure.
Thank you.
So we had a reduction in our business line, which was part of the non-instructional, a couple workshops ago, and we increased in the curriculum line.
Uh, next account is twenty-fifteen, our radio station, uh, current budget is one hundred and one thousand, it's dropping slightly to ninety-nine thousand four seventy-nine. Reason it's dropping is because there was a contractual line in that radio station budget, which we have thus eliminated. It was not being used, we took it out. Next section, account twenty-twenty, School Supervision. Current budget twenty-two, twenty-three, eight million three hundred twenty-seven thousand. Proposed budget twenty-three, twenty-four, eight million six hundred thirty-two thousand, that is a three hundred and five thousand dollar increase, or three point six-six percent. And again, that is our principals, assistant principals, office staff, and materials and supplies. It does seem to be in line, so, three point six-six percent. Go to the next page. This will be general, general education, music, Department of Music and Arts. Account twenty-thirty-eight, The Music Office. Current budget is one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Proposed twenty-three, twenty-four budget, one hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, five thousand increase. That consists of contractual salaries, office staff, materials and supplies for the office, for the music office. Next account, twenty-seventy, In-Service Training, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Next year's budget. Twenty-twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, it has remained flat. That is for curriculum writing, professional development, and certain BOSI services related to professional development. Account twenty-one, ten, Regular School. Current budget eighty-seven million four hundred twenty-five thousand. Proposed twenty-three, twenty-four budget, ninety million seventy-seven thousand, that is just over, that is two point six-five, one million dollar increase, or just over a three percent increase. That consists of contractual salaries, textbooks.
You better have another mic.
Yeah.
Ron, thank you.
So regular school consists of contractual salaries, textbooks, BOSI's, materials and supplies. If we flip the page briefly, I'd like to point out what did that ninety million dollars encompass? The ninety million dollars encompasses teachers and TAs, which equate to seven hundred and thirty-three full-time equivalents or eighty-one point six-five, one million dollars. It consists of salary adjustments for four hundred thousand dollars, which in essence is educational credits. Long-term leave replacements for one point six million dollars. A teacher or staff number goes down on leave. We bring somebody in. They get paid from that line. Substitute teachers and class coverages, two million dollars. Spells it out, substitute teachers. Per diem substitute teachers. Department chairpersons, three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Our professionals, our aides, our classroom aides, our office aides, hallway aides and cafeteria aides, one point eight million dollars. Textbooks, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I'd just like to note that that amount is an aidable amount under instructional materials aid at, I believe, fifty-eight thousand twenty-five cents per student. Then we have our BOSI's section, five hundred and sixty-two thousand. Majority of that would consist of the district's Canon copiers, a lease we just entered into. Again, that is an aidable expenditure under BOSI's aid. And then we have other travel contractual materials and supplies at nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So that's the summation of what the ninety million dollars consists of. If we go back one page and continue.
Ron?
Yes.
I mean, if you don't have it right now, that's fine. Can you maybe send it to us in the Friday packet? Like this other?
Uh huh.
It's a million dollars in travel. Can you just break that down for us?
Sure.
And also, for the substitute teachers and class coverages, did we budget two million last year? And then what did we spend of that? Did we budget two million of the year before? And why are we, are we just continuing to budget two million? Or what are we getting close to?
We are spending that.
Okay.
And if not, we are spending more than that.
Okay. And then are you adjusting it as a budget?
Absolutely.
That's when we have the budget change for that.
I just don't, I just don't see. You know, I don't see if we're spending over a hundred in yearly.
I would put that in this budget.
Thank you.
And finally, under General Education Music and Arts, we have account 2011 Arts and Education. That is BOSI's. That is guest speakers for the kids and educational trips for the kids and students. That is an aided expenditure. It is funded half and part by BOSI's aid that we get from our expense from the prior year. And it is funded in half by PTA donation. So in essence, it's a wash. It's fully funded.
And we've kept that flat from the prior year to the current year. During COVID, where these trips didn't happen, we kind of did a reset for the past two years to get these programs started back up again in the classroom. And then we'll address in the subsequent year's budget with that submission.
How in thought is that money distributed among the buildings?
The money is distributed amongst the buildings through analysis, taking a look at what each building in the prior year has spent and how much aid they're getting back in the current year.
And we look at the enrollment in the buildings and drive that along. So here we have just a breakdown of some of our Department of Music and Fine Arts. And just to point out that six hundred and three of our students participated in this month in this past year. One hundred and fifty-seven students were selected for all counties. Nine students were selected for all states. Two students selected for all Eastern. Two students selected for all National. And our St. Chum's Marching Band competed into first place in the New York Field Band State Finals. So that's all.
Michelle, I want to thank you for getting that. You know, we put a couple pictures in, like, this is a reminder, right? Like where this is going and where it's going, what's important about it, and see some outstanding work that our kids are doing in these regarding music and fine arts. So thank you very much for these numbers and for recognizing.
And I just wanted to point out just something at the elementary level. You'll see that there are sixteen hundred and seventy-seven students in chorus. A chorus is now mandatory at the elementary level for fourth and fifth graders. So that is the total population of our fourth and fifth grade students. But what's also important to note underneath that is twelve hundred and seven of our fourth and fifth graders participate in the instrumental music program. So seventy-two percent voluntarily are in these music programs. That's not a part of the curriculum. That's not natural.
Okay. The next section for discussion is home teaching, music, health, and foster tuition. Account 2136 Home Instruction, which is home teaching. Current budget twenty-two, twenty-three is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It is going to nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget. That is a four hundred thousand dollar increase.
How's that possible, Mr. Sax?
I will tell you how that is.
The note at the bottom.
That is a seventy-two point two-three percent increase. Effective seven, one, twenty-three, July first of the upcoming year, the minimum weekly instruction hours for home teaching has increased. Ten hours to fifteen hours at the secondary level per week and five hours to ten hours at the elementary level per week. Keep in mind, this is an unfunded mandate.
So the state decided we're going to increase these by whatever percent, right? They're going to increase this and did they increase funds with it?
No, they did not.
Okay.
Now, next section, music. This is the music program. Account 2138. Current budget is four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Twenty-three, twenty-four budget is basically remaining flat at four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. It consists of stipends, repairs and maintenance, uniform training, for example, for the marching band, travel, and materials and supplies for the music program itself. Next account, 2160 Health Education. Current budget twenty-two, twenty-three, thirty-five hundred dollars. Proposed twenty-three, twenty-four budget, thirty-five hundred dollars. Remaining flat, no increase. That consists of health supplies such as ADP Eds, things of that nature. Account 2180 Foster Tuition. Current budget is fifty thousand dollars. Proposed twenty-three, twenty-four budget, fifty thousand dollars. No increase. If I can just point out briefly what foster tuition is. If a child goes into foster care while living in the St. Chum School District but is placed in another school district, a district of location, that district is responsible for educating that child and can bill St. Chum for that education. Next page. Our next section is Occupational Education. Evening High School, Library and Instructional Technology. Count 2280 Occupational Education. Twenty-two, twenty-three budget is two point four million, four and nine million dollars. Twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget, two point five eight five million dollars. That is a one hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and sixty dollar increase or five point five eight percent. This is a majority of BOSI's code. It does consist of some material supplies for our in-house CTE program, but these are our students that go for technical and career training at BOSI's. It is based on a three-year rolling average. And right now, they're using a hundred and sixty-one students multiplied by the annual tuition costs. Our current rolling average for the twenty-two, twenty-three year is a hundred and fifty-six students. So the students are going up a little bit and costs are going up a little bit.
The per people rate for this program is fifteen thousand one hundred and thirty dollars per student. And we have had conversations of doing more in-house and offering these programs in-house. But it's important to note that it is a three-year rolling average. So even if we were able to develop a program for next year, pull back twenty-five children, twenty-five of our students, that rate would be the same for the next year. It would be the year after if you make that change, that'd be average. You know, that factors into the average.
That's not going to stop us from trying to create our own programs and pull kids back where we should for our own programs.
Yeah. Should I have three-year averages as a BOSI's policy?
Yes.
And every BOSI does it different. Some BOSI's might have a two-year average.
That's a, we're part of Eastern and it's a three-year.
The next account is twenty-three, twenty-five Alternative Evening High School. Current twenty-two, twenty-three budget is one hundred and eighty-five thousand. Twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget is one hundred and eighty-five thousand. It's remaining flat, zero percent increase. This consists of instructional salaries and a BOSI's code. The BOSI's code is not a majority of this expenditure. It is for students who are between the ages of sixteen and twenty-one seeking a GED. St. Chum is responsible for paying for that. Next account is twenty-six, ten Library Media Centers. Current budget twenty-two, twenty-three is two million one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget, two million one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. It is a almost a fifty thousand dollar increase or two point three percent. It consists of our librarians' contractual salaries, some BOSI's codes, and library books. A lot of it should be noted that library books is an aidable expense at six dollars and twenty-five cents per child. Next account is twenty-six, thirty Instructional Technology. Twenty-two, twenty-three budget is seven million one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget is seven million two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. That's a one hundred and twelve thousand dollar increase or one point five seven percent. It consists of contractual salaries, instructional technology equipment, hardware, software, and BOSI's services. We go to the next page. Central Registration and Guidance. Account twenty-eight, oh, five Central Registration. Two hundred and sixty-seven thousand six hundred and six dollars for twenty-two, twenty-three. Twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars. It is increasing by eleven thousand seven 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 or four point four percent. This area consists of contractual salaries, supplies and materials. This is our attendance teacher, who is also our homeless liaison. The next section, account twenty-eight, ten Guidance. Four million four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for twenty-two, twenty-three. Twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget will be four million six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That is almost a two hundred thousand dollar increase or a four point four four percent increase. This consists of our guidance councils, contractual salaries, BOSI's, materials and supplies. I believe this is, this section of BOSI's is where we budget for noms. Okay.
Thank you. Just a quick question. So, and Ron and Michelle, you know, the word materials and supplies seems to be on every line item. How much are we spending materials and supplies? How is that done? Seems like it's everywhere. I'm sure everyone needs it, but how do we do that?
Well, with a budget this thick, it could add up, right?
It can, and it's based on an allocation.
It can. It's based on a per people allocation that we do in the beginning of the budget cycle for especially instructional supplies. So that's how it's configured.
That's the largest piece. All of the office material and supplies is a pretty nominal amount. It's usually around fifteen hundred dollars for an office. And that's different, you know, the basic line against that office every year. But the rest of it is the per people allocation.
So if we go back to instructional supplies, I believe it would come to somewhere just under a million dollars.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Okay, so just to recap what Ron had said. And important to keep in mind that these are still draft numbers. The BOSI's portal did open up a few weeks ago and Ron's office and the business office are in the process of getting those estimates from the various departments of what they'll need for the upcoming year and putting those numbers in. So these numbers still can change as we go through that process and we get more information on our outstanding figures. But if we look to recap the curriculum and instruction in total, we're looking at a three point five one percent increase in these codes or roughly one million dollars. Now, if we take that and we add it to the prior two presentations that we did, because now we've covered all of the account codes in our general fund budget between these three presentations. So when we look now, if we move ahead to our non-instructional, which was our first presentation, we're looking at five point three-five percent increase in those codes. And you see it's eight point seven million dollars. And if you remember, back in the first presentation, we were looking at roughly eleven million dollars. And I think everybody was taken quite a back, taken quite a back by that. And it was mostly driven by our increase in our health insurance premiums. So a couple of things to note on this slide here that have changed from those first and second presentation. You'll see transportation is going up by seven point eight-six percent. And I did mention in the prior presentations that we had an RFP out for our small fan service. Well, we did get that RFP back. And only one contractor did return the RFP for us. And it was coming in at a fifteen percent increase. And Mr. Sax did reach out to this contractor and tried to negotiate with them. And they really were under no obligation to negotiate with us because they were the only person that responded. But Mr. Sax can be very persuasive. And after a lot of back and forth and calculations going, you know, back and forth over about a week's period of time, they did reach an agreement at where they came down in year one from fifteen percent to eight percent. So that alone saved us three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars over the original RFP.
Mr. Sax, have some more negotiations for you to do. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And you did negotiate years two through five as well. So overall, it was roughly a nine hundred thousand dollar saving in our transportation line.
Michelle, was this thing, the contract extension, or did the contract expire?
That contract expired about nine years ago. And it was, you know, extended.
Extended every time. What you're saying is that when a contract on transportation is extended, it can only be increased by a certain percentage.
Correct. By CPI.
By CPI.
That's correct.
So obviously, seven point six, that's far more than if we were in contract, it would have been far less that.
So CPI is eight percent there. So they came back at fifteen percent. And it just, Mr. Sax was able to negotiate that for us. We were very happy about it. The other big change you'll notice is in the benefits line item, where originally we were showing eight point eight million dollar increase in that line item. And a couple of things that we were looking at. For one of our larger unfunded mandates is the Medicare Part B reimbursement for our retirees. And we did notice, and I did reach out to our auditors just to make sure that this is allowed. But we have a two point two million dollar liability on our trial balance. I reached out to our auditor because I had never in my prior district seen an accrual for this expense. And I understand the reasoning behind it. It's we work on a fiscal year and Medicare is based on calendar year. So this accrual is accounting for, okay, twenty-two ended in December. Our school year goes through June. We have six months of a new rate in our Medicare reimbursement that will be reimbursed in the following school year, the following spring. But we don't need to have that accrual there. And knowing that we were facing such a large gap, I did check with the auditors to see, can we take that liability? We don't need to have it on the books. Can we take that off the books, which would lower our expense by that two point two million dollars? In this year only. It is a one-time shot. So that expense is really four point eight million dollars. We're able to get it down to two point five million this year by using that liability and taking it off the books. Important to remember that in the twenty-four, twenty-five year, that liability is back in full. But this is just one measure that we can take to kind of bridge that large gap with all, you know, everything hitting us at once in this next budget cycle. If when we're doing our master scheduling and we look at our staffing needs and we look at our retirees and whether we can attrition or do we have to replace, when all of those things come together, if this isn't needed in this year, we might be able to hold that to the next school year when we know our federal grants are going away and we might need it then. But this is just something to keep in mind that we have available to us, which is why I'm showing it here now, if we still have so many unknowns in our budget. It's just a way to help us bridge that gap by two point two million dollars.
Questions and one?
And then the final recap is in our student activities and support services. Again, these numbers haven't changed very much, small up and down based on final numbers with our BOSI services. We will see that in our, the twenty-sixty to twenty-eight fifty line items, we're showing a seven point six four percent increase. And a lot of that is BOSI services and movement in between codes to salaries that were recorded in one code last year that are now coming into a different code this year. So in total now, we have covered both budget account codes. And we're looking at a draft as of right now of three hundred and sixty-five point five million dollars. That is a fifteen point four million dollar increase budget to budget over this current school year. Non-instructional that we reviewed is a hundred and seventy-two point nine million of that budget or forty-seven point three percent. Student activities and support, seventy-two million or nineteen point seven percent. Curriculum instruction that we just covered, hundred and twenty million or thirty-two point nine six percent. Again, these numbers are draft numbers. Our projected revenue increase is about ten million dollars or two point eight seven percent. And again, we're looking at a fifteen point four million dollar budget to budget increase. So we're still working on closing that gap. Important to mention in that ten million dollars is the utilization of six million dollars in reserves like we had done for this current school year. We are looking at our twenty-two, twenty-three year and projecting about where we're going to finish. Mr. Sax does that analysis of all of our codes monthly now until we reach the end of the year. I attached the January one to a Friday packet a few weeks ago. The February numbers will be in, if not this Friday, next Friday's packet. We are getting closer, as we get closer to the end of the year, it's easier to predict where we're going to end. And right now, it is looking like we will be able to replenish the six million dollars in reserves that we have taken for this current year. So that will put us back up to where we are now and then allow for the utilization in the next school year.
So I just want to be, be clear on that. Last year, we took six million from reserves, we're looking to at the end of this year with that six million back. So if we have to take six million reserves again, it's not like, oh my gosh, now we're twelve million. That did not happen.
No, no, we'd be back where we are right now, we'd make ourselves whole again. That's correct. So next steps, we continue to refine our numbers. At our March twenty-second meeting, which is workshop four, we are going to look at the proposed, any updates to the proposed budget and also have our capital project recommendation. And then April fifth will be the final budget workshop with everything taken into account there. And then we'll discuss this in addition later tonight. But our budget adoption will be on April eighteenth, which is a Tuesday. And that's to be in compliance with the military mailing of the military ballot. So we'll talk more about that. And then the budget hearing is May third and then the budget vote is Thursday. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions and one? Mr. Shagn? No, Reynolds. Thank you so much. Any other presentations?
That is it for this evening, sir. Thank you. Okay, agenda. Item four, we have this sent, we have sent agenda A through G, the motion please. Say sir, any second. Ms. Pickwitz, questions and discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Five is personnel. We have teachers, we have sent agenda A through B, the motion please. Say sir, any second. Thanks, Ms. Pickwitz. Questions and discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Scoville, let me just take a moment to recognize Marissa Palosa. She is, she's just been granted a probationary position here. She's over at Grande Elementary School. She's been doing a great job as a leave replacement and she's a great asset to us as we come on board. Congratulations for probationary position.
Thank you. Item six, personnel, we have sent agenda for support staff, we have sent agenda A through G, the motion please. Say sir, any second. All right, Ms. Reynolds. Questions and discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item seven, we have personnel for administration, motion please. Okay, Ms. Reynolds, say anybody who says sir, any? Discussion of the questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item eight, contract, we have sent agenda A through J, the motion please. Slattery, check with Ms. Pickwitz. Questions and discussions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Item nine, steel trips, get in motion. Slattery, second, Ms. Reynolds. Questions and discussions? It's for the steel trip to Washington D.C.
Very happy, very happy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Item ten, we have action items, we have sent agenda A through D, get in motion. Say sir, any second? Ms. Reynolds. Questions and discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, item eleven, we have special education, sent agenda A through B, motion please. Say sir, any second? And Miss Slattery, okay, any questions and discussions? And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. And twelve, resist to monthly reports. I know that our committees are often running, they have a meeting regularly to address some terms of board, some directors of board. So I'm going to open up to members of the board that want to provide an update. Ms. Reynolds?
Just a quick update on budget advisory committee. The last time we met was February after our last meeting. We're set to meet again tomorrow. Very active committee, asking for a lot of good information, so we're really diving in. So, so far, so good, it seems to be moving along. You know, Michelle and Ron have been on these calls and driving through these presentations. And yeah, more, more update as we go through.
Will your next meeting be scheduled?
Next meeting's tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, we hold it, you know, the day after these presentations in preparation for the budget auction meeting where they'll present their recommendation.
Any other updates? I know legislative committee, I'm not prepared, but I know that they are meeting as well on the ninth, seven P.M. There is.
Yeah, Stephanie's not here following. The chair of the legislature is looking to put a meeting together. I don't know if they know the date down yet, but.
I bet everyone sees something in the Zoom call.
Yeah, I'm trying to follow Jim's email, there's a lot, a lot emails flying. But the goal is just to continue the work they're doing on the resolution on security, on specific security on training. And I think everybody saw the letter. So the goal there is to have to take that letter, spot in all the elected officials and everybody, anybody that can influence this and just try to get that worked out.
Any other monthly reports? Any closing comments? Any, any? This is? More discussion items? There is no discussion, we had them all. Future agenda items for discussion, say sir, any?
Yeah, Ron, I don't know if any emails soar, but I know they're going to start calling for proposals, propositions for New York State School Boards Association again. Some reason I think it's the twenty-second. So I don't know if we want to discuss crafting some other proposals or. You know, like with the, with Joe Cannon's done in the school safety and back and now, now that we actually have a, I guess it actually is a bill now, right? They're going to send it to the bill.
My understanding is they've got a draft of a bill and I think, I don't know the whole process, but I think it's going to open up a different aspect of the New York State government. So there's a, there's a ID attached to it.
Okay, I'm a supporter of that, you know, back, they're just, I don't know, we can try to wait or.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that we should do it sooner than later. I know we together some really, really good proposals last year regarding mandated registered home works. I think what we should do is, they gained a lot of support, not quite the consent that they needed last year. But I think we should maybe look at some of the same ones and maybe re, you know, reapply them. I don't know, everybody else.
I think Mr. Scoville and Ms. Pickwitz, they're teachers, so they can actually see it because they work with students. So they work with, like, because you're good at the language. And then they can be the ones presenting it, because they're presenting it from a teacher's point of view.
Actually, I worked with Ms. Dexery on the original one.
Yeah. So I, I think if they work together, and again, you know, because they know more from the teaching end of it. That would be good.
So creeping up on the next agenda, I guess. The resolutions through NISBA? Okay. Allison, you got that too? Allison, if you could provide us, you had just put a, a copy for the entire board of the passwords and that.
Can we just, can we add one too about, I know that it's been going on forever, but, you know, as we look at a three hundred and sixty-five million dollar budget, the unfunded mandates just cripple our community. And, and we were asking them for two percent, two percent, two percent, we're going to two percent our community to death. And it's not, most of it's not our fault when the governor continues to, you know, we send up, every dollar we send up, we get a fraction percent back. And she gives it to Buffalo and Syracuse and the city and, you know, the, the areas that, you know, we're not friendly to her in November, don't get every penny back that we're sending up there. We, we need to start pushing for our fair share back of the dollars that our community is working so hard every single day for. So that, that has to be something that we push for as we, as we navigate through NISBA, I guess.
And like, like I said, I mean, there may be a proposal already from another school district that we might be able to model and maybe even, you know, if it wasn't, but I, I agree. I mean, you know, the problem that we have is that, that, you know, even if we go out with a two and a half percent budget, we have, we have an issue in station where we have three townships and we have an equalization rate. And sometimes it's in a way missed the community. So a couple of years ago, town has some sort of eight percent increase, almost a thousand dollar increase. And, and a lot of people reached out to me and said, wouldn't it? He said it was two and a half percent. It's once again outside of our control. We have, absolutely, we could add that to the list as well, things that we might want to write a resolution on.
If I could jump in for one second, Mr. Picorillo also. My understanding was there was something before the legislature insofar as anytime they make a decision, such as the decision that we spoke about tonight, where we're going to double the amount of home instruction that kids are going to receive and that therefore would impact our budget, that they were supposed to look at in terms of budgetary impact and then include those funds in that. I don't know if you, you probably heard that just as I did, but never went anywhere as far as I know. Thank you. Any other recommendations or future items in discussion?
I have one more. Just to touch on something that was said tonight. I understand that everyone in the community has their own little friend group. I think that's great and certain people liked it, certain of us, and some people didn't take my name and that's fine. But if you're going to send something to the board, send it to all of us. So much more can get done as a group. Like when, when there is a free flow of information and we all get eyes on it and we can all read it and feel how passionate individuals are about something. I mean, this, this what happened was simple for us. It was pulled immediately, right? We were all on the same page. But once nine people didn't say boo to each other, there was no fighting, there was, it was pulled and it was, and it happened. But then there was a subsequent audio message or video that nobody saw but one person. And, and that kind of stuff has to stop, whether it's from us or, you know, maybe getting rid of individual emails and sending it as a group only because it bothers me that I'm not getting information. How can I make decisions? How can I, how can I help make this community better if I'm not giving the information to do that? And we, you know, and it's not just me, you know, for everybody, we've got to be better for a free flow of information so that we can help instead of sit up here and just get yelled at. If we knew, we could have done more.
Yeah, I, I do believe that there is the opportunity to have a Board of Education email and it would just go to everyone, it'd be one email. We would then therefore remove all the individual emails. I don't know how the board feels about that, that obviously that's a discussion that could.
The only thing is that you could still text to someone, you know.
Sure, sure. So just.
Yeah, Miss Slattery?
Sorry. So I think this came up a few years ago where instead of individual board members getting it, it would just go centrally to the board, we would all see it. And then the response could be, because again, me personally, Laura Slattery, a community member, may feel very differently than the nine board members sitting here. So the answer would be every email gets answered, you know, we're taking this under advisement, we're taking this. And then the discussion and where we all stand happens in public. Because if we're each emailing, I as a board member think we should do this. I as a board member think we should do this. I as a board member, each one of us have no more authority than any of you sitting there. I cannot change a policy, make a decision, or do anything as one board trustee. Yes, my community elected me. Yes, I answer to you. But if I'm talking privately to everybody giving my personal opinion, that doesn't carry any more weight than my neighbor giving you the same opinion. Because it's only the majority of the board that can make a decision for the board. And that was how I felt a long time ago. And again, people feel I'm elected by the community, I'm going to answer the way I want. But the way I want is just me as a community member, not me as a board trustee. How I respond is as a board trustee, sitting here tonight, all of us saying, when nine of us agree, we all agree, the survey should have been pulled, it was pulled. But if each one of us keeps answering something different to every community member, then this is where the confusion and the problem comes in. I have no power, I don't view myself as having any other power than a parent or a taxpayer in our community. The only power I have is when the majority agrees with me here. So if I say, you email me and I want this done and I want this person accountable and I want this, whatever I say back to you means zero, means zero. Only what we discuss here as a majority means something. And that's just my opinion.
No, thanks, Ron. So to that point, we have a station board email that comes out. How do we get, should we get Dr. Bell Terry included in that? Because emails go to the board. Most of the time, we flip them right to Dr. Bell Terry for a response to your point. Because versus a community member, it's like, you know, getting nine different personal responses. It's not solving the problem. And then the community members are coming here and saying, I only heard from two board members. But they don't know that we all flipped it to Dr. Bell Terry and say, please respond, that's appropriate. Let's get the message out, get the response out. All right? So to that point, we should think about having you included in that or do we just flip it to you? I mean, we flip it all the time, but, you know, they think that we're not responding. But yes, we're pushing it to you to get the district's response. Versus nine individual community members' personal opinions, to your point, that really carried a weight.
And then in the piggyback on what you said, I mean, look, you know, I respect what Ms. Slattery's saying. I mean, I've always been opposed to having one email because there were times.
No, I like my own.
We like our own. Because there are times we receive personal emails. I received an email from a friend thanking me for supporting the station, these and stations, but they are wise. You know, I don't think there's something that's, I would be more comfortable with Dr. Bell Terry being part of that, that Board of Education, but I'd like to maintain our personal emails. I think more, so I think we need to use a common practice that no one person, unless designated by the board, should respond to the community. You know, there are times we pick up the phone, we call individuals, but we got to be careful. You know, when we call them, that we're not speaking of behalf of the board. But we're representing the district in a positive, professional way. And, and that's a practice that we have to start doing, you know. We, we can't take upon ourselves and, and, you know, you can reply back to the person and say, thank you for your, you know, thank you for your email, certainly, that's not a superintendent, but, you know, being very careful about voicing our, our personal opinions, okay, on.
Right, so to that, I've been on the board almost ten years. I try and respond to almost every email. Thank you for your email. We're going to be discussing it. I forwarded to administration, I've done, but I can't give a decision in an email. And I know that's what people want, but I'm not the person to make the decision, only the majority. But on my personal email, I try and respond to every single person. I may miss one or two and a couple of times if we get a bunch, but I try and respond to every email. Because again, I was elected by the community, but I'm not responding saying, I am going to make sure so-and-so gets fired or, or something like that because I don't have that authority. And again, when I was a parent and a community member and I sat in those seats, I didn't understand what it meant to be here and that I have no more power than anybody else. So I, I like the idea of the board email and having still our own individual ones. But if we all could agree that we would come respond, thank you for your email. We're going to be discussing it as a board. I forwarded to administration, I forwarded to wherever. I, I think that once we started giving our opinions and emails, it led us down a bad path.
So Al, that wasn't really a discussion.
No, I know, I'm sorry. No, 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 that's fine. The only thing I'll say, and I don't know if we end this conversation, but like not every email can get responded to by.
every email fixer can get responded to by, like he has work to do. We want, we hired him to do like work. Like if he's responding to 100 emails a day, this is how stuff falls through cracks and we miss it because he's too busy answering all the emails that we keep forwarding him all day. So we have to find a system where certain things are appropriate for him to answer and other things get pushed back. Did you respond to, did you talk to the teacher? Did you talk to the principal? Did you? And send them the list of communication of where they should be going first so that, you know, and not just to say him, but he's in charge of the whole district. We can't have him responding to individual community members because he wants a personalized email. If we got a copy of page, he might as well send that to Connect Ed and just do it that way as well. So, you know, it's just something that we need to have some type of, yeah, policy for home communication.
And that's, you know, but something that we should maybe look at too is continuation of training where we can abort retreat. Laura Goodworth, that suggestion up, that we do abort retreat and we kind of, you know, formalize our processes and procedures.
Yeah, I think it's good, like going to the conference, seeing, you know, how different districts or different boards do things and just hearing, you know, something different that makes you open your mind. I think it's a good idea.
Any other discussion?
Just kind of came to my head with state assessment season coming up. And, you know, thank you for putting out that email for everybody to fill out the form for our goals who choose to opt their children out. And we know letters aren't the greatest, but I still think a letter reminding them, it could be part of our board resolutions to NISBA. You know, I just think that, you know, as a teacher and knowing what we do in Sajin, we get a lot of immediate data from assessments that we're giving here on our own, immediate feedback. We see growth. And I know in the elementary schools, we have our, the non-assisted principals, what do they call them?
Principal eight?
The principal eight, you know, the two new ones that we have. They're looking at the data, they're looking at what children need help, how we can support them. When we get data from the state, from those state assessments, it's not accurate, it's not giving us a big picture, not everybody's taking it. I still think it's, you know, a lot of time, money, destruction to the school day that we're continuing to do these things where we have said numerous times, school districts know how to assess the students, mark these students, help them and go forward. And I just think that we're now adding another level of another two days here, two days here, you know, that we're taking time away from learning and time with teachers in the time in the classroom. So I just want to, you know, we're getting to that time, I still want to send that message, you know, to the state about more local assessments. I know they're talking about the region's exams, they have that committee going on, but I still want to think about that three to eight assessment. And it started with just eighth grade, then it went to fourth and eighth, and then it went to four, six, eight, and now we're every grade, two subjects. So we have science, we're moving years now for science. It's just a lot, a lot of testing. And I think again, the data that we're collecting at the district individually, and I know even the district I work in, we're seeing the data real time, we're seeing the kids that are struggling, we're giving them services, we're helping them. That's much more meaningful than, you know, unfortunately, the state, you know, the state assessment where the data I don't believe we're getting is meaningful and useful in the big picture. So that's just where I wanted to bring that up again about. And field tests, I'm not a fan of them.
Does that mean, do you want us to go back and write a letter about it's assessment season again? Let's remind, I'd like the state to recognize that Sajin's schools field that, about tests and field tests as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and Ms. Heinz will help and our writer over here, Ms. Benatour